Present and future, and I extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples here today. We also acknowledge the Awabikul people to the east and the Duckenjang people to the south and other Aboriginal peoples who now live within the Cessnock LGA. When I have the prayer for tonight, we have Pastor Rachel Main from Beyond Church. All stand for the prayer, please.
Merry Christmas, everyone. Let's pray. Lord God, we just take a moment to focus on your presence here in this place tonight. We thank you for everything that the gift of baby Jesus into the world 2,000 years ago means for us today. And Lord God, I just pray right now that each one of us would experience a sense of Emmanuel, God, with us this Christmas season. Lord, I pray a blessing over everybody who's participating in tonight's meeting, over those who have worked hard to contribute towards the agenda. And as always, Lord, I pray for a spirit of unity, because your word promises that where there is unity, you command a blessing. We're grateful to live in such a blessed community, and I just pray a blessing over every heart and home in our community this Christmas season. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Rachel. Before we get started, I just wanted to take a moment to reflect on the recent passing of former mayor of Cessnock, Alison Davey, who was a tireless champion of our local community. Alison served Cessnock Local Government Area as a councillor for 29 years, including one term as a mayor from 2008 to 2012, and as deputy mayor between September 1998 and September 1999. Alison was also a passionate community advocate, who was prolific in her service to local organisations, including the Cessnock Chamber of Commerce, the Coalfields Healthy Heartbeat, BPW Cessnock, and Central Hunter Community Broadcasters, among many others. Alison was also one of the founding members of Cessnock Tidy Towns in 1983, of which she remained the secretary and treasurer for decades. As a result of her outstanding ongoing contributions to the Cessnock Local Government Area, Miss Davey received our community's highest honour when she was named the 13th Freeman of the City of Cessnock in 2019. She was made an emeritus mayor in 2013, named Cessnock's Senior Citizen of the Year in 2016, and received the Local Government New South Wales Outstanding Service Award for her almost three decades as a councillor. The thoughts of all at Cessnock City Council with Miss Davey's family and friends, for a sign of respect for this former mayor that's been so significant for Cessnock in general, though we might stand for a moment in silence just to pay tribute, please. Okay, so we have one apology tonight from councillor Dunn, who's unable to make tonight. We also have no AV link, sorry, AV link or any other leave of absence to note. Could I have someone to move that, please? Okay, councillor Hawkins, second and councillor Palmaskey, all in favour? It's unanimous? Confirmation of the previous minutes from the meeting held on 19th November 2025? Someone to move councillor Pascoe, second and councillor Madden? All in favour? It's unanimous? Any disclosures of interest? Councillor Judd?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I've just got a quick question. What I, I want to make sure I do the exact same one as I did last time. Did I click non pecuniary interests? For the same?
Standard, yeah, pecuniary.
The pecuniary one? Yeah, okay, so I did click the right one, sorry. I just wanted to make sure I had it.
Yeah, just standard.
Okay, so report RM1/2025, PE31/2025 for the DA of the proposed telecommunications towers. I just declare the following interests, pecuniary interests, same as last time. Thank you. I will leave the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Judd. Councillor Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. Relating to report number MM15/2025, minutes of the council-initiated awards committee, held 19th November 2025, I declare a non pecuniary less than significant interest, less significant conflict for the reason that I have a personal relationship with an award recipient. I choose to remain in the chamber and participate in discussion and voting, as the conflict has not influenced me in carrying out my public duty, because I am not part of the awards committee.
Thank you, councillor Lee. Any other disclosures? Councillor Hawkins?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. MM15, 2015 council-initiated awards committee. I, James Hawkins, declare a non pecuniary interest, less than significant conflict, for reasons that I have a relationship with one of the award nominees. I choose to remain in the chamber and participate in discussion and voting, as the conflict has not influenced me in carrying out my public duty, because this relationship does not affect my decision-making on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hawkins. Just confirm, any other disclosures before we move on? No? Okay. Moving on to petitions. So we have one that's been logged. Is there anything outside of the matter and relating to WI15? Any other petitions that need be tabled? Councillors? No others? We have a speaker tonight in this petition. It's with regards to WI15/2025. It's regarding the provision of public amenities at Crawfordville, sorry, Crawfordville Park at Millfield. Do we have Mrs. Amanda Dear here? Would you like to come up, please? Mrs. Dear? Thank you, Mrs. Dear. You'll have three minutes from the time you start. We may vote for an extension, one minute each, but it's five minutes absolute max. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name's Amanda Dear, obviously. I'm here tonight because I created the petition that you'll be speaking about tonight. I'm not an actual park goer, as in I live across the road. I don't need the toilet myself. However, what I see on a daily basis, I think I need to give you the vision of what actually happens in that park, and how crucial these toilets are needed. So firstly, I would like to thank councillor Two for putting in all the amenities that have gone there lately, over the past, say, five, six years. It was a bit of a dirt bowl, not much there for the kids. Now we have a skate park, a path that goes all the way from Millfield Road right up to Wallonby Road through the park. We have a basketball half-court, I think you call it, nice tarred car park, beautiful fenced-in playground for the kiddies, goalpost down on the oval for the kids to play the footy. What we don't have is an accessible public toilet. So with all that infrastructure that's gone in there, the turnover in the park for people attending is just through the roof, which is great to see. However, what I witness from my front porch on a daily basis is not so much. So I'll give you a little bit of a vision here, so you know what it's like. So people are going there now, some families, all day, taking the kids. They're spending the whole day. They're having a picnic or a barbecue. But what I witness is people constantly pulling into the park that may not be using it. Millfield's a bit out of the way. There's really no public toilets around anywhere out there. You would think a park would have them. So they pull in, I watch them walk around the hall, come back scratching their head, and then you see them start to do these ones. And all of a sudden, they're off. And most of them don't think to go over into the bush, which would be lovely. They urinate on the basketball court, right there on the barbecue brickwork, right where all the chairs and tables are, that people, families come and have their picnics, where children, two, three-year-old toddlers crawl around on the ground. And this is on a daily basis. It would be up to 10 to 20 people a day. Now, if you're talking one or two a day, maybe it's not a big issue. But when you have 10 to 20 a day, urinating and defecating all over those grounds, it is not only an environmental, but also a health factor. So I would really, really appreciate it if you guys think about that when you take it into consideration tonight. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Dear. Now, is there any questions for Mrs. Dear? Yep. Councillor Judd?
Thank you. I'm glad you actually did do your speech that way, because I frequently go in that street. I haven't been to the park, but I have a friend in the street, so I have noticed, you know, how good it looks and whatnot. But the times that I go, it's a little bit quieter, so it is nice to know that it is getting used. What I want to know, though, closest public toilets, though, where, because unless the Millfield shop is open, there isn't one, is there?
No, and Millfield shop, to my recollection, closes at 3pm most days. The next public toilets, to answer your question, councillor Judd, would be Paxton Hotel, I think.
Okay. So roughly, too, what's timeframes, like, are the most busiest? So I'm assuming after school, when the shop's already shut, weekends where the shop, is it open a lot on the weekend, or?
I think they have the same time, Monday to Sunday, 3pm, but I may be incorrect on that.
Yeah, no worries. But you're seeing most of this of an afternoon, I would imagine.
Exactly, exactly like you said.
Yeah, no worries. Thank you so much.
Could I just, sorry, could I just add one, one bit to that that Jessica's brought up there, or councillor Judd? It's not only people that come to the park, it's tradespeople calling through, businesspeople. It's people that may have went and visited someone but thought they could make it, and then realised they couldn't. It's, it's, yeah, disgusting.
Okay. Councillor Dixon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to know, so apparently there is toilets at the community hall which are locked, is that correct?
That's correct.
So would that be a consideration you'd be willing to consider? Like, that would be okay, that would solve the problem, or not really, if the toilets were maintained and unlocked?
I've got no issue with that. It's just about having public accessible toilets.
So they're close enough to help, like, people would actually think to go there even, and to look to see if there's a toilet there?
Exactly. Well, that's what they do. They walk around the hall, thinking that that's obviously where they'll be attached to the building, and then you see them come back around scratching their head.
Yeah, because they're locked.
And they're walking everywhere. The only thing there that I think has been an issue in the past with council is, years ago, I think, let's say eight to 10 years ago, there was a lot of vandalism, and that is why they got locked again.
Fair enough. Okay, thank you.
That's okay. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dixon. Is there any further questions? All right, well, thank you very much for your time. Thank you for presentation. Thank you.
It's possibly a little bit unorthodox, but there's a lady here that runs the hall that we maybe could get a comment from her with regards to the provision of proper facilities.
We usually have to screen them first before we allow them, you know, to actually speak. Is that you're talking about speaking tonight?
Well, I guess the question that came up was, would those toilets be suitable if they were able to be used? I'm pretty sure she can answer that question for us.
Yeah, no, while she's actually designated to speak tonight, it's gone through the proper checks and balances, we won't be able to consider that tonight. However, when it does come back, we'll deal with this matter now, then we can actually work through that. She can have a chance to speak, and we can, you know, ask through the course of time.
Sorry. Yeah, maybe I guess we would probably all be expecting an email from her tomorrow, maybe outlining the hall's committee's position on that. But I look forward to that email. Thank you.
No worries. Well, now we'll, yeah, thank you, councillor Hawkins. So we'll, we'll deal with this report now. So could I have someone to move this report? Councillor Judd, second councillor Harrington? Any discussion on the recommendation?
Councillor Madden? Thank you, Mayor Wotton. I'm all for public toilets in all parks. I think it's a great idea. I've always campaigned for toilets. But just a question on the petition. There seems to be a double up of some names. Maybe this is actually two different people, the same person signing the petition twice. What does the council have in place to verify persons signing petitions? For example, cross-referencing addresses to residents. And also, is it normal not to have a date on sign on the petition? But don't get me wrong, I'm definitely for it, but I just wanted some clarification on the petition itself. Happy to take it on notice.
I'm excellent commentary, so I'll just put it through to general manager.
Thank you, councillor Madden. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the community participation plan, petitions accepted, we don't seek to validate or verify. What we'll do is provide that petition to the council as part of whatever report it may be attached to, and it's a matter for the councillors to work through. But we don't seek to overtly validate names and/or addresses with respect to petitions.
Okay. Yeah, don't get me wrong, I don't want that to take down the actual public toilet. I think it's great. Let's go for it. I just wanted to, some background questions on the actual petition, how it works. Thanks.
Councillor Harrington?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I agree with tonight's presentation that public toilets at Crawfordville Hall are very much needed. Maybe I should have declared a conflict of interest, because I occasionally walk my dog along the lovely path that runs through the, through the park. But, and it is a lovely park, as Mandy mentioned. It has great facilities that have come to considerable cost to council and other levels of government, but yet there are no toilets. So while council, as we all are aware, does not currently have funds to construct new toilets, we must investigate using existing toilets at Crawfordville Hall outside of the leasing hours of that hall. Now, while not ideal, this provides a temporary solution for park users and park visitors, park passersby. I thank Mandy and the Millfield community for raising this issue, and I support council exploring ways to improve amenities at Crawfordville Park with our available resources. Thank you.
Councillor Harrington, councillor Judd?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Okay, so this is a bit of a, little bit of a long spill and a bit of, like, might be a little bit off topic. As much as I love the toilets, and I'm all for the toilets being there, but I'm wondering, and I've mentioned it before, most of our hall hires, like, hall hires are done via volunteers. I'm just wondering, and I mean, when they hire the hall, they, they clean it, all that sort of stuff. I don't know if this needs to be as a NOM or something like that, but to get this off the ground and actually get it open to the public to be able to use. But what I'm suggesting, and I have mentioned it before, is where maybe we could have somebody that lives close to these public toilets that might consider being the cleaners for it, that might cut down the cost to council to actually have it open for the community. And maybe, you know, as our volunteers, they could have some sort of subsidy to encourage that. These are just ideas, just to try and push to actually have toilets there that actually brings the cost down to council as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Judd. Councillor King? There's a statement? Yeah.
Oh, I just have a question anyway. I don't want to speak.
Yeah, I guess, you know, not so much, but it's an open statement. Yeah, we have a councillor King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question to one of the directors, I suppose. The speaker mentioned vandalism happens there quite a lot. So it sort of prompted me, is there an update on the NOM from months ago about vandalism?
I believe there was an update on the resolution track. We'll put it through to director of works.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor King, do you mind if I take that on notice and provide some details and an update on, on that report?
Thank you. That's all.
Councillor Pascoe?
Thank you, Mayor Wotton. I just wanted to ask a question as well. Point number two just says that the outcome of the cleaning service is reviewed, be considered prior to the amenities being serviced. I know I read it in our information, but I was wondering if we can have a timeframe of when that review was done, just so that the people that have put this petition forward can know that this is, that there is an end date?
Yeah, I'll put it through to the director.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Pascoe, it is in the report, but we anticipate to have that service review undertaken by second quarter next year.
Yeah, beautiful. I just thought it might be helpful for the community to know that it is on the schedule and it is being worked on now. So it's not a, it's not a, yes, it's not a no, it's a soon, hopefully.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Further discussion? We'll put it forward for a vote. Those in favour? It's unanimous? Oh, sorry. Apologies. Just showed those hands. I thought it was unanimous. So councillor Dixon, it is, okay, this, I keep going, saying hand going up and down. Okay, councillor Dixon, Harrington, Hill, Judd, Lee, Madden, Mason, Palmaskey, Pascoe, Hawkins and Wotton. Those against? Councillor King. It's carried. Okay, moving to englobo voting list. Could I have someone to move that? Councillor Lee? Speaking councillor Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. Moving that, having read and considered the reports in the agenda related to items CC86 2025, CC88 2025, and CC89 2025, councillor adopt the recommendations as printed in the business papers for those items.
If someone to second that before we put it forward for a vote? Councillor Judd? All in favour? It's unanimous? Now, just moving to the notice of intention to deal with matters in confidential session. This is with regards to NI3/2025, and that is to do with procurement concession under section 55, the Wallonby Road upgrade project. Could I have someone to move that? We'll deal, once this is gone through, we'll deal with this at the end of the meeting. So could I have someone to move? Councillor Judd, seconded. Councillor Pascoe, all in favour? It's unanimous? We'll deal with that later. One mayoral minute tonight, so MM15. It's just with regards to the minutes of the council-initiated awards committee, held on the 19th of November 2025. I'll read the recommendation as written. That council endorsed the recommendations of the council-initiated awards committee for Cessnock City Council Australia Day Awards. I trust that everyone's read that report. We'll deal with that obviously as well in closed session. Oh, sorry. No, we'll just deal with this now, the mayoral minute, sorry. So is everyone in favour of that? We'll put it forward for a vote. All in favour? It's unanimous? Any motions of urgency? There's been none that's come my way. Nothing to table? And there's a rescission motion, so... Yep, so councillor Judd, if I could have you just exit the chambers, please? So just to clarify, and that councillor Judd's left, just to clarify, this will be a discussion about the rescission, and then once we deal with that, we'll go from there. So can I have someone to move that? Councillor Mason, seconded. Councillor King, speaking councillor Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support the motion to rescind, to enable the other councillors who requested the DA be called up, councillor Dixon and councillor King, both of whom were absent at November's ordinary council meeting to speak on the matter. A request was made but not supported last meeting to defer the DA determination until their return. The spirit of this deferral request was consistent with other deferrals. This chamber has made this term to defer notices of motion from being considered if the proponent is absent.
Thank you, councillor Mason. Councillor Harrington?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I'd like to speak in support of this rescission motion, and my reasons for it are not health-related. There are many people in our community who question the validity of information provided from varying sources, and while I respect the views of all regarding emissions from telecommunications towers, this is not a debate that I have plans to become involved in, and not a reason for my decision. I am voting to rescind the motion because I believe that the original decision on 25 Cessnock Street telecommunications facilities was made without key planning information that councillors would reasonably require to make an informed decision. And to be clear, I am not against telephone towers. I fully support improving telecommunications across our LGA. But what I don't support is making decisions without detailed and transparent information, or approving a site where a location has not properly been justified. First, councillors were not given a robust site analysis, an alternative site analysis, in my opinion. There was no clear assessment or detailed information of other locations considered for this site of this tower, such as council-owned land, or industrial or commercial zones nearby, in the information that was presented to us. The report suggests that approximately 14 other sites were investigated, and I'm not sure why it's an approximate number, yet no details of these, of those, of the locations of those alternative sites and the specific reasons of each that were deemed unsuitable were given. Now, due to the sensitive nature of the DA and the public opposition, I would have thought the applicant would have been requested to supply this information. If a detailed alternative site analysis is not an explicit requirement in our planning documents of this council for developing the applications of a telecommunications tower, then it needs to be added. Secondly, councillors did not receive what I consider meaningful photo montages or detailed and precise information in the visual impact assessment. The visual impact assessment, its statement itself, notes, and I quote, "The scope of the impact is dependent upon the position and perspective of the observer." And that's very, very vague. I understand photo montages are not required under State Environment and Planning Policy 2021. However, a quick Google search found four local councils who require them in certain DAs where developments will significantly impact streetscape or public view. So even if not automatically required, sorry, even when it's not automatically required in their planning documents, many councils retain the discretion to request a photo montage on a case-by-case basis. With regards, with regards to a 30-metre telecommunications tower development application in close proximity to resident businesses and sporting facilities, photo montages would have been a useful and transparent method to demonstrate the visual impact. Again, this is not a requirement of our planning documents for development applications of telecommunications towers, and if, and if it's, and it's not, but I think that should also be changed. Because realistically, how can anyone assess the impact when no photo montages were provided, showing images of the proposed tower inserted into a real photograph from multiple surrounding viewpoints? And thirdly, and lastly, the community consultation information provided in the report, in my opinion, was questionable. I disagree with the determination that only six of the 19 objections could be considered, because some were said to be copies or cut and paste. In my opinion, every objection represents a resident or a business owner taking time to express genuine concern, and all should be acknowledged, not dismissed. So for these reasons, I am supporting, sorry, for these reasons, supporting the rescission of this motion is the, I feel is the responsible and transparent course of action, as it allows staff the opportunity to request this information so that councillors can make an informed decision. Thank you.
Councillor Harrington, councillor Dixon?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support this motion tonight. For one reason, I was actually on leave at the last meeting when council put this motion up, so I didn't actually have a chance to ask any questions or have my say on the matter. My primary concern tonight focuses on the strategic placement of cellular infrastructure, and I wanted to know what the technical and operational justification for positioning these transmission towers so close to residential so close to residential homes, schools and businesses, where previously they were located on high elevation on a distant hillside maximizing coverage while maximizing direct localized exposure to population. So that was my main reason why I'm supporting this motion tonight. Thank you.
Councillor Dixon, is there any further discussion? So we'll. So we'll put this forward to rescind. So those in favour of rescission? Councillor Dixon, Harrington, King, Mason and Wotton. Those against? Councillor Hill, Lee, Madden, Palmski, Pascoe and Hawkins. We'll move on. It's not, yeah, it's lost. You could have councillor Jurd back in chambers, please. Councillor Hill?
Point of clarification, just on what's written currently on the documentation is councillor King is absent from the votes for the rescission motion, as currently shown. I believe councillor King voted for the rescission motion.
Okay, now moving on to items to be discussed, so just before we go on, okay, we've got that correct there, okay. Moving on to officers' reports, so we'll start with GMU CC six slash twenty twenty five. This is the appointment of Audit Risk and Improvement Committee Independent Member. Could I have someone to please move that? Councillor Hill, seconding councillor Harrington. Any discussion? No discussion. Put it forward for a vote. All in favour? It's unanimous? Now moving on to report PE thirty five slash twenty twenty five. This is to do with the visitor economy grants and sponsorship programme twenty five twenty six applications, page forty eight. Beg your pardon, PE thirty four. Can I have someone to move that, please? Councillor Lee, seconded councillor Hill. Got discussions, so councillor Jurd, did you press your button to speak? Okay. Just to, just, I just want to check with the mover, do you reserve your right to reply? Would you like to speak? Okay. Councillor Jurd?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to double check. When it says in-kind support, that's not council giving that money as well, yeah? No, good. I, I thought that was correct, but I just wanted to make sure for sure. Okay, so my next question, what was the percentage for what the minimum required was for the co-contributions? Because the Hunter Valley Wine Country One seems like council's paying the majority of it, so council's giving twenty, twenty thousand and their co-contributions is four thousand?
I believe we have the manager of tourism here. I'll just put that through. We don't have a microphone over there, apologies. I'll need a notice of motion to put one in.
Thank you, through you, through you, Mayor. Yes, for tourism projects, we required a co-contribution of twenty percent. So that's the four thousand.
Oh, okay. Righto. Okay, thank you very much. In, so in May twenty twenty two, council endorsed fifty thousand to the tourism grant. If, if that was a council decision, that means we could endorse changing the tourism grant and using it towards something else. Is that correct?
My understanding is yes, that'd be like a resolution of council. We could proceed to anything we like.
Yep. Okay. I just want to make it clear though, I'm just not against this tourism or the grant system, but I'm just looking at everything. So we can show the community we're taking this very seriously about the SV and really looking at the budget and working out what's wants and needs. How we decide what we need, what we want, because when we all set our budgets at home, we can't always do what we want. We must, when budgets are tight, only spend on needs, not wants. So that's why I asked a few questions on it. Because I'm just a little unsure, like fifty thousand's quite a fair bit of money, what it's going to actually achieve. Because can someone sort of run, run down what will it achieve for our community to use their, their, their rates for these grants?
I'll put it through to you, manager.
Through you, Mayor. A lot of these grants are used in the local economy, so of the grant funding that has been acquitted previously, a lot of that is spent in the local economy, so that is boosting local business, but it's also about attracting visitors. So we are a visitor economy with a lot of, I guess, visitors to our LGA each year. So I guess it's just a matter of marketing. So that's, I guess, the, the recommendation for this round of funding to, to support that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councillor Dixon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I just ask, where does the money come from for these grants? Is it from rates?
My understanding would be from the general, you know, budget which you just made up partially of rates, but additional commentary, director?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You are correct, it is out of our operational budget set every year by council and it is general rate fund.
Rate fund, okay. Because I can't support this tonight for the reason being that I don't see how we can justify giving out grants and then asking the community to pay more rates with the SRV. Like I realise a lot of organisations rely on these grants, but we can't really take from Peter and give to Paul, in my opinion, so thank you.
Councillor Pascoe?
Thank you, Mayor Wotton. Apologise, I'm going to have my back to you, Caroline. With the, the, probably the largest one there, the Tourism Development Project, I note that it's being run by the Hunter Valley Wine and Tourism Association. But will the content that they provide, it says the new assets will strengthen destination marketing, things like that. So will council have like rights to access that? Will that information be shared with council?
Yes, through you, Mayor. All of those assets will be shared, absolutely. I think if HVWTA weren't actually producing that material, then it would be council's responsibility to do that instead, which would probably cost us more time and money.
Yeah, so the way I'm sort of thinking of it now is it's kind of like a subcontractor kind of agreement there. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any questions? Would you like to write a reply? No? We'll put it forward for a vote. All in favour? Councillor Harrington, Hill, Lee, Madden, Mason, Palmski, Pascoe, Hawkins and Wotton. Those against? Councillor Dixon, Jurd and King. It's carried. Moving on to report CC eighty four, the authorisation for sale of surplus council land. This is part lot three seven eight DP one double zero two double one two. Could I have someone to move that, please? Councillor Hill, seconded councillor Lee. Speaking councillor Jurd. Just before, you're right with that, write a reply councillor Hill. Okay, councillor Jurd?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. On page fifty five, it says the proponents required to remove the shed, which was constructed on land without owner's consent. But then on page fifty six, it says nineteen thousand five hundred and twelve plus GST, agreed price, less the quoted price to remove the shed. That to me reads that we're going to be essentially paying because for the removal of the shed, because it's going to be less of nineteen thousand five hundred and twelve. Why are we paying to remove the shed?
Okay, I'll put that through to the director.
Thank you councillor Jurd. I don't have the full details of that councillor Jurd, so I'd have to take that on notice.
Okay. Righto, all right. Well, that means I'm just going to have to vote a certain way because I don't like the idea of us paying for removal of the shed.
Councillor Hill?
I guess in addition to councillor Jurd's question, in the, my reading of the section on page fifty six states that council will issue the proponent with an invoice in the amount of nineteen thousand dollars. So it will be the proponent paying the nineteen thousand dollars, not council paying the nineteen thousand dollars.
The way I read it was that they were paying that much for the land.
Hmm, minus the removal of the shed.
So meaning we, we, it's not going to be ninety thousand for the land. So the shed costs thirty thousand to remove, that takes that off the ninety thousand. So essentially we are paying for it because we're not going to get the full nineteen thousand. Is that correct?
Yeah, my, my understanding is just the same as the general manager, that we're, we're not paying. We'll just get, seek his clarification.
Yeah, we wouldn't be paying, but we wouldn't be getting nineteen thousand because it's agreed price less the quoted price to remove the shed. So meaning minus the price of. So essentially we are paying to remove the shed.
Yep. Well, we've got the, yeah, director will take the question on notice. So we'll move, do you have another question?
I'm just wondering if we should defer the report till we know.
So you want to put it forward, so procedural motion for defer? Till we know more? Okay, can I have someone to second councillor King? So we'll deal with this now, so this is to defer the motion. So all in favour? Sorry. Yeah, to defer procedural. Councillor Dixon, Harrington, Jurd, King, Lee, Madden, Mason, Palmski, Pascoe, Hawkins and Wotton. Those against? Is councillor Hill. So we'll defer that to the next appropriate meeting.
Thank you.
Oh, we just dealt with it. Sorry councillor Madden. You can send, you can send it via councillor. Councillor, sorry, not councillor, councillor. Okay, so moving on to report CC eighty five. This is to do with financial sustainability and scheduling of the, of January twenty twenty six ordinary council meeting. Could I have someone to please move that particular report? Councillor Pascoe, seconded councillor Madden. Councillor Pascoe, would you like to speak? Is there any discussion on the report? Councillor Jurd?
Sorry, I thought I might let someone else go first. Okay, so I haven't sent this in through to council as an email just yet, but I have spoken to a couple of staff when we were out out at Wallonby in particular. You were there, Mayor, and you would have understood what, what happened there. There was a few, quite a fair few angry residents, as you could imagine, that were out there that claimed that they didn't have the notice for the meeting and something went wrong. With that, I had a fair, I had a few people in Cessnock also tell me that they did not get, receive the survey till after the date of the survey ending, not getting notice of these, these town meetings and all those sorts of things. So due to that, I'm then worried, did enough people know? Not everybody's on social media. We don't have the advertiser anymore. There's a lot of elderly that wouldn't have known about what was, what's going on. So I don't feel like the communication has been adequate, in my opinion. There's a lot of angry people. I don't think it's been dealt with the right way. And with that, I don't think we're actually ready to go to the next step. So therefore I'm not going to be supporting this tonight.
Okay, had a question, would you like to ask a specific question about the, the mailouts and? Yeah, well, just, we'll submit it, like, put it, put it together, we'll send it through to the council, cancel that email. Sure. No worries. Councillor Harrington?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I'd just like to, through you, ask the directors, I guess what did happen with that mailout. And I believe my understanding from a message from the, the community today that a follow-up mailout was delivered to the Wallonby area and a, which I was unaware of, which again, I guess is a problem with communication. I found out from a resident today that there was a community meeting for the residents out at Laguna yesterday. Would council, like, one of the directors like to give us more details about that?
So just with regards to, yeah, just to clarify your question, so when the mailout actually occurred the second time from style?
What was the issue with the first mailout? Because I know, yeah, I just would like to know, have council investigated what happened there and how many areas were missed? And my second question is, the problem in the Wallonby area, has that been adequately addressed?
Okay, thank you. So director of corporate and community services?
Thank you, Mayor Wotton. Councillor Harrington, prior to the first meeting out at Wallonby, I, I don't know the date, I can't recall off the top of my head. There was a campaign around advertising which included a mailout and a number of pamphlets and the like being dropped at various residences and addresses. There was some, a number of claims that those weren't delivered and people didn't know about it in various ways, shapes or form. Having said that, I believe that the attendance at the Wallonby, first Wallonby meeting was only beaten by the attendance at the Brankston meeting. So somehow that information got out. Prior to the rescheduled meeting, which was held this Tuesday, and it was held because of those concerns that were raised at the first meeting at Wallonby by the residents that attended the meeting. Council officers last week went out and physically handed out or put the pamphlets and the likes, the same documents that was delivered the first time around. There was a number of instances which we have on record and in pictures of around a range of addresses, not just one street, where the pamphlets from the first mailout were still sitting in mailboxes and, and the like. So I won't hand on heart, I can't say that everyone got one and there may have been ones missed. But certainly in relation to the information that was disseminated, it was as good as we could do. There were some issues, I believe, at the meeting on Tuesday night around the quality because it wasn't an in-person meeting with the professor in, in attendance. Unfortunately, his health didn't allow him to come back down like he did the first time around. So it was a audiovisual type scenario in a hall, quite a hot day, with basically a projection on a screen and the professor doing his presentation. As to how effective it was or whether people were happy with it, I really can't comment on that. That's an individual thing that the residents need to come to their own conclusion on.
I think a good indicator for the success, just to speak further to that, is we're looking to have a workshop as councillors, just with regards to surveys and outcomes. So is there any further discussion? Councillor Hawkins?
Mr. Mayor, just briefly, our code of meeting practice, do we allow for remote dial-in to council meetings? That's only for work purposes? It's not if you're on holidays?
Are you talking about the new code that we're adopting for twenty six?
Will it be in place? I'll be in Queensland for this meeting. So I mean, I'll be supporting that we have a meeting because I think it's important to get the information out as openly and transparently as possible. If I can dial in for the meeting, I will. Otherwise I'll be able to just watch it online with everybody else who's interested.
Just to clarify, so we'll put it through to the director of communities, just to get the nuanced advice. So director of corporate community services?
Thank you councillor, Mayor Wotton. Councillor Hawkins, yes, you are correct, it is in our existing code of meeting practice. The ability to dial in for a number of meetings and it is also retained in a limited capacity in our new code of meeting practice, which comes into effect one January. So in that instance, if you're away, you will have the ability to dial in.
Holidays will have the ability? It wasn't just work, but we had it restricted?
It's, it's in a, in a limited capacity, it's in there. So yes, you would be able to dial in to that January meeting via AV if the elected, the rest of the councillors agree to it, of course.
Yeah, I don't think she'll let me get out of a family holiday, but thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? No further discussion, we'll put it forward for a vote. All in favour? Councillor Dixon, Harrington, Hill, Lee, Madden, Mason, Palmski, Pascoe, Hawkins and Wotton. Those against? Councillor Jordan King, that's carried. Now moving on to report CC eighty seven slash twenty twenty five, it's to do with ward boundaries and the variation in enrolments. It's to do with ward boundaries and the variation in enrolments for an update. So could I please have someone to move? That's councillor Hill and seconded councillor Harrington. Uh, councillor Hill, would you like to open or reserve? Reserve? Anyone want to, uh, councillor Jerd?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just got a quick question. How much does this cost council to do this? Roughly, if you know?
I'll put that through to, uh, director of corporate community services.
Um, thank you councillor Jerd. If you're talking about, um, keeping it under, um, monitoring, um, it's just part of a normal process, occasionally month to month or every quarter will, staff will go in and look at the enrollment statistics, which are on the New South Wales website, the electoral commission website. Um, so the cost of monitoring is next to zero. The cost of actually going through and doing a, like a readjustment is a fair bit of staff time. Um, and then obviously some of the advertising and, and, um, talking to councillors and the community about the, any proposed changes, but at the moment there's, there's virtually zero cost.
So a quick question for you. Last term, I remember going over ward changes and I remember having meet, like, we had a fair few meetings with, um, I think it was Kar- Carrie Nielsen? Is that, if I said it right? So with her going over the boundaries, that sort of stuff, that would be where it would start to cost a little bit more because she had maps and things like that working out where the boundaries would be rather than just monitoring numbers?
Yep, um, you're exactly right councillor Jerd. So it is the staff time in preparing those things, looking at some alternatives or how we can potentially get the variation back under the ten percent and hopefully also future-proofing it. So you're making a bit of a, a judgment call, I suppose, on where the, the growth in numbers are going to be.
Yeah.
Um, so that is when, when it kicks in. And then there's a range of options that we would come and talk to councillors about. Um, so that will all, that's mostly staff time.
Yep.
So that's usually just captured within our normal operational budgets. Um, any changes then, we've got to go out and let the community know what it is that council is proposing. Um, and that, that has a little bit of a cost to it. Not, not astronomical cost, but a bit of a cost.
Yeah, so if we, um, support this tonight, that's what we're, we're supporting, is all that? Yeah, what we just talked about, or is it just the monitoring?
Yeah, it's either or, like both, I believe, but, uh, for the director, oh, there you go.
Um, thank you. So what you're voting on tonight is effectively just noting that the variation exists and that, um, the practice from the New South Wales election commission is they usually like you to do it just before the election and that's about eighteen months out. Um, just in case that memorizes the chances that you're going to get another variation. So at the moment it's just noting and moving on and we'll look at it in twelve months' time, eighteen months' time.
No worries. I, I would assume council would be all over this, but, um, I just want to point out, and I'm pretty sure I'm going to be pointing out something you already, already know, but with it being only four years, well, less than four years since last time we're doing, doing it. I know you have to do, keep the checks, but, um, Ward B can never grow. So I don't know whether or not when you look at your ward adjustments, maybe Ward B needs to be a little bit different to Ward, to what, what it sort of sits at the, at the moment. Because see, Ward A, Ward C, Ward D can always grow, but Ward B seems to be suffocated and can't grow anywhere. So just a little mental note, thank you.
Okay, and perhaps if it does cost us any money, we could, uh, shift those costs back onto state and federal government for their housing targets. Uh, we'll now put it forward, is there any further discussion? No further discussion, or put it forward for a vote, all in favour? It's unanimous? Now moving on to, uh, CC ninety, this is the resolutions tracking reports. Could I please have someone to move that report? Uh, councillor Jerd, seconded, seconded councillor Harrington. Uh, speaking councillor Jerd?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I've got a question. So when we, when we do a NOM, um, is it normal for council staff to track the hours that's put into a councillor NOM?
Um, I understand unless it's by request, but, uh, put through to director of corporate community services?
Um, thank you councillor, um, Mayor Watten, I'm sorry councillor Mayor Watten. Um, regardless of how council resolution comes about, whether it's through a notice of motion, a mere minute or a report from an officer, um, ultimately the resolution of council is something that the general manager has to enact, um, in as quick a fashion as possible. Um, so it wouldn't necessarily be normal that we would sit there and, um, track the number of hours that we were looking to, um, to enact that resolution, um, unless there was really a specific reason or a request to do so.
Okay, that might half answer, just because I'd never seen it before. And when I read through there, like my NOM, that was BN thirteen, um, it's actually requested that they, they track the, um, staff hours involved. And I just thought, that's very strange, I've never seen that before.
Just, are you with relation, just to clarify, is the NOM to do with Cooper Street, but the N thirteen?
No, uh, BN thirteen on page eight of the enclosures, where it says, uh, noting request to track staff hours involved may need input from CIO and manager customer service. So please coordinate this investigation, noting request to tracks, um, staff hours involved. It's not about the, um, it, it's about the communication, um, app and email system that I put forward.
Yeah, so, um, just to clarify, probably, you know, part of the motion or the resolution of council to include that, we'll have to go back and have a look at that though.
Okay. Right here. Um, and then I just had another question. Uh, with BN sixteen, like the Charlton Street parking report is into the new year. Um, I'm just wondering when the signs will get taken down for the no, uh, no to curb? Because it didn't say anything about that in it.
Put that through to, uh, director of works.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Um, thank you councillor Jerd. Um, I put out an, uh, an all councillor memo today related to the Cooper and Charlton Street, um, pedestrian, high pedestrian zone. Um, it, within that, um, memo, it talks about BN sixteen, which is loosely related to that works. And the main reason is that, um, the parking, the reason for the parking being in stated the way it was, uh, currently, uh, was to reduce, um, impacts on the footpath. Um, with it currently being a pedestrianized zone, you know, technically pedestrians are able to move within the roadway. Uh, once we remove the, the pedestrianized zone, legally pedestrians should be walking within the footway. And that footway will be effectively impacted by whatever, um, solution we put in to manage that parking moving forward. So it is tied up with that work.
Uh, I'm, I'm just a little confused because I thought, like, the motion that we put was to do the report and also take those signs down.
Yeah, and to do, to do those, take those signs down, obviously that means that the people will be able to park as they have previously, which has reed to curb, um, which means that that also inhibits the footpath and, and compromises pedestrian safety. So we've taken, all, all due respect and the ability to put the two together so that we can come up with, uh, um, a proper outcome for that, so that we can remove the, um, the restriction that is currently existing on the, excuse me, currently existing on the parking.
Okay, I, I'm, I. What, what I'm, what I'm hearing is the resol- resolution of council was to remove those signs, yet it seems to not be what's happening because it's tied into a report, but it seemed like it wasn't tied into the report from my understanding. Like, we had the discussion about nose to curb can be just as blocking of that footpath. And if we want to talk about, you know, pedestrian sa- safety, it's quite frustrating actually that nothing's been done about the shared zone either. Because that's a huge safety issue where we've had people almost get hit constantly on Charlton, Charlton Street, where they're supposed to share the zone and then they, you know, not giving, they're, they're actually giving way in Cooper. So I'm just unsure why, why, why bother going to a council meeting realistically to requ- request something, get it voted on and then seems like it's not going to happen? Is there any, like, date on when those signs will come down?
There, there is intention to remove those signs. As I, as I mentioned, it's, it's tied up with that, that other resolution, which is the, um, the Cooper and Charlton Street pedestrian zone.
So how does it get tied to that? I want to, I want to know, because they're two separate NOMs. Like, I'm just not sure how the two mesh because it's, like, I know you're talking about the shared zone and the, and the, and the pedestrian safety, but they're two different things, in, in my opinion. So I'm just not sure why they're all linked in together. And realistically, what I'm hearing is not till maybe September next year because that's the date that was on for the, um, for the Cooper and, um, Charlton Street, say, uh, shared zone. Is that correct?
No, we, we intend to bring a report back to council in February for, for that and also to resolve the, 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 uh, the other nomination.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, councillor King?
Thank you, I'd just like to continue that discussion because that was my notice of motion and I'm, I'm quite disappointed and I don't frankly understand how a separate notice of motion is now being delayed to be a part of the CBD master plan when the entire intention of bringing to the council the motion and having a resolution is to come to an end result that council expected to be implemented, you know, in a reasonable amount of time. But I kind of feel like there's a bit of, you know, um, charades going on here where you're trying to couple one NOM with another NOM to delay the entire process to get back to square one with the CBD master plan instead of carrying out council's resolutions. Can you just explain to me how a separate NOM is be, is able to be delayed this much?
Uh, director of works?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Um, councillor King, I, I explained to councillor just before around the, the synergies or the relationship with the restrictions on parking or the, the current parking arrangement with respect to, uh, nose to curb and the impacts that has on the footpath that exists out the front of or adjacent to those parking spaces. That's currently, and at the moment, subject to the, the shared zone where pedestrians are able to walk legally wherever. Um, we, we remove the shared zone, which is part of the, um, BN eleven, which looks at removing the shared zone, it's, it's disconnected from the CBD master plan and reinstating or instating, um, uh, marked foot crossings for safer pedestrian crossing. Um, legally, once you remove that shared zone, pedestrians must walk on the footpath, not on the road, unless they go across designated crossing points. Um, those designated crossing points, uh, to be determined, obviously, um, we're in the process of, um, consulting with Coles and Woolworths with, with respect to those crossing locations where they align on Charlton Street. We'll also have a potential influence on what we do with those parking spaces. So if you remove the, the signage, uh, effectively it means that, um, those vehicles can park reed to curb, which then impacts the footpath as we currently have it. We remove the, uh, the, the shared zone, pedestrians got to walk on the footpath, then they're compromised by that as well as the trees and the like poll that it currently exists.
Um, with respect, that was the entire point. The point of the notice of motion was to reverse the rule that you change while this current arrangement of pedestrian access is there now. All that norm was meant to do was to reverse that rule back to how it was, maintaining, you know, because you're not going to change, it's clear you're not changing Charlton Street intersection overnight. So while you're waiting to do that, the intention of that notice motion for reversing the parking rule was to change it back to how it was. So I, I don't accept the fact that you now have to wait because it's creating a risk that wasn't there before. Is there, is there some sort of a, um, formal process outside of council, how I can complain about this?
Well, the complaints would go through, uh, general manager.
Thank you.
Or to OLG. No further discussion from councillor King. Uh, councillor Madden?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. It's actually a really good point that councillor Jerd did raise earlier was, um, the, the work hours that are put into these motions. I think that's something we need to look at further down the track for councillors and the community in a wider body to understand when someone raises a motion, how, how many work hours are spent downstairs putting, uh, going through the motions of working out whether this motion's going to work, how are we going to do it? And if we can add it to this resolutions tracking report, we can get an understanding that one simple motion, and I support councillor King's motion, I did. So that motion, for example, how many man-hours are spent and what was the cost of actually reversing that? Or a different motion, um, how much did we spend to get that motion across the line? Just, just so we can understand what the costs are for each motion.
Considering that may be a separate notice of motion?
It will be, yeah.
Potentially?
Potentially, yeah.
Costing tracker?
It's something that I raised, I think, three or four months ago, but, um, councillor Jerd just mentioned it then, I think it was sort of forgotten about, but, uh, something that we should consider further down the track.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion? Resolution tracking report? No, I'll put it forward for a vote now, uh, all in favour? Councillor Dixon, Harrington, Hill, Jerd, uh, it's unanimous? Now moving on to report WI fourteen, unsealed roads and costs. Uh, could someone to move that report? Please, councillor Lee, seconded councillor Dixon. Uh, councillor Lee, no, no reply. Councillor Jerd?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I just want to, I'm, I'm pretty sure this, this come from one of my NOMs. Um, and I just want to ask a couple of questions. So when I read this report, it says that there's no statutory obligation under the local government Act nineteen ninety-three, or the roads Act nineteen ninety-three, to maintain or construct a road. So that, so that there is clarity that this means if council, like, currently if Crown Land or a developer give council a road, they have no standard in which they must have to give it to council and council has no obligation to fix slash maintain it? Have I understood that correctly?
Uh, to clarify, I'll just put it through to director of works.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Um, councillor Jerd, can I take that on notice? Uh, there, there is some nuances in respect to that. Council does have an obligation to maintain a road that already exists. Um, but with roads that aren't formed?
Yeah, may, maybe can I re-ask it? Because, um, in general, it just seemed like that if a, what I've read in the report, if Crown Land gave you a road, that they didn't have to have it to a certain standard. Was that correct?
Um, council, in, in most terms, when, um, Crown requests to, for council to take on the responsibilities of a road and/or if a private owner requests that council take on the responsibilities of the road, council would request that it is up to council's engineering standards. Um, the ability of the council to, um, enforce that with Crown Lands is, um, is, is not possible, but it's a.
Is that what this report is, trying to enforce what we currently aren't able to enforce?
Sorry, could you repeat that?
So is this what this report, it, it's kind of given us a brief of what you've been doing in the background, but is it essentially to try and, like, enforce Crown and developers to give us the road in, in the right conditions?
As part of this unsealed roads, uh, this is basically just to align, um, and update our maintenance schedule for our unsealed road network. But it highlights that there is an ongoing, um, I'll, I'll say negotiation with Crown Lands with respect to Crown Land handover. Um, and the ability for us to negotiate with Crown Lands more proactively as opposed to, uh, receiving a notification from Crown Lands to Gazetteer Road to council.
Okay, so, um, so yeah, essentially it's like an FYI, this is what we do behind the scenes and, you know, this is where we're at, basically. Uh, the only thing that I'd like to, would have liked to have seen, and I don't know if it's something that you can put in the report, um, but realistically, the next steps, how do we start, like lobbying to get Crown Lands, developers, government, like, to actually start putting in more money for these roads? Because as I'm reading this report, we don't have enough money to sustain the roads that we currently have. And if we keep subdividing and all this sort of stuff and keep bringing on more roads, we're going to be even worse in the next couple of years down the track. So, um, I don't know whether or not these guys are already actively doing that. I would assume that these are. But is there something like councillors or something that could push to advocate to get more funding? Is, do you know the next steps for us?
I can definitely answer that one. I can definitely answer that one. So there's a lot of advocacy going into that, so concerning cost shifting, even going back to the previous notice of motion that councillor Lee brought with regards to, to roads in general, but we definitely need to start shifting some, uh, costs back on to, um, particularly state government, but there is a lot of advocacy work going on with that right now. A hundred percent agree with you.
Yeah.
That we do need to see some cost shift back, back, uh, to other levels of government, for sure.
Yeah, because all I can just see is keep going into the red if we don't start doing, being a bit more vocal on this matter.
It's a big issue of sustainability across the board, is how much, you know, burden the ratepayer has to pay and fork out where it could be made a lot easier, in my opinion.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? I'll put it forward for a vote. All in favour? It's unanimous. Uh, moving on to WI sixteen, it's the quotation for Doyle Street Bridge Replacements. Someone to move, councillor Harrington, seconded councillor Hawkins. Councillor Harrington, would you like to speak to the report? We can have your right of reply.
Uh, miss, um, yeah, I preserve my right of reply.
Yep, councillor Hawkins.
I could just speak briefly to, um, to how welcome this bridge replacement will be. It's, obviously, it's an aging and deteriorating bridge and it's good to see that we're upgrading infrastructure, that, that, that's actually a very busy road. So it'll, it'll be good to see it, see the bridge upgraded and the safety of the area improved. So, that being said, over to you, councillor Harrington.
Can I just sneak in a question just before we have your right of reply? And totally off the cuff, but is there an estimate of how much this bridge actually costs to, um, rehab, for lack of a better word, each year on an annual? Director?
Through you, Mr Mayor, and thank you for the question. Can I take that on notice? I think we, we do have, um, details on our ongoing maintenance for that bridge, um, but I'll premise that by saying that this bridge now is in a state where it is beyond a maintainable state.
Yeah, thank you, director, it's definitely a worrisome bridge, so it's good to see it fixed. Councillor Harrington.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would just like to echo councillor Hawkins's comments about, um, the much-needed, uh, renewal or reconstruction of that bridge on a very busy road in our LGA. But I'd also like to point out to councillors, um, that the funding, uh, sorry, council has currently has a T Corp loan, uh, to cover the, um, reconstruction of the Doyle Street Bridge. But has also, um, submitted a grant under the Safe Local Road Infrastructure Programme. So if successful, this grant, if the grant application is successful, um, it would result in a saving, I guess, of three million dollars, giving us the flexibility to repay back the loan or allocate those funds to other important infrastructure priorities. So I look forward to the state government's response, sincerely, sincerely hope it's a positive one. That's all, thank you.
Uh, I totally echoed that sentiment, councillor Harrington. I believe it's the federal government under the, that particular funding. Hopefully we can get, pass some politics and get our roads fixed, uh, sorry, bridges. Councillor Judd?
I just got a quick question.
Sorry, closed debate, sorry, yeah, we had, um, write a reply with...
It was just a quick question.
Uh, you have a question? Yeah. Yeah, we closed debate with councillor Harrington. We'll put it forward for a vote. All in favour? It's unanimous. Now moving on to report WI seventeen, and this is the adoption of the asset management strategy and asset management, management plans. Uh, someone to move that, please, councillor Hawkins, seconded councillor Lee. Any discussion? I'll just check with councillor Hawkins, move, uh, do you want to write a reply? Okay. Councillor Lee?
Just very quickly noting that, um, the open spaces and other structures, um, reporting there in table four point three just references some out-of-date regulations, I've spoken to the director about that, acknowledging this will become a live document if adopted tonight and that can be fixed up at that stage.
Thank you, councillor Lee. Councillor Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. I just wanted to speak in support of adoption of the asset management strategy and the accompanying plans. Spent my whole Sunday reading that, uh, War and Peace novel, um, but let's be clear, the outlook for the next ten years for our LGA is sobering when we're considering maintaining the current service levels across our assets and that will be a real challenge. This strategy highlights infrastructure pressures, funding gaps and the tough decisions ahead. It also provides a clear framework to guide planning and investment. Importantly, council and we as councillors need to commit to these strategies to ensure alignment with a long-term financial plan and to progress towards financial sustainability. I thank the staff for their work in preparing these plans and to give, um, and providing us with a clear picture of our asset management priorities. I support their adoption and encourage ongoing focus on securing resources needed through grant funding and, and the focus on financial efficiencies to maintain, while maintaining our community assets. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Harrington. Councillor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. I'd also like to just echo some of the statements made by councillor Harrington there at the end of her, um, speech in regards to the amount of work that's gone into both of these, this strategy and this asset management plan from our council staff over a number of years. As I understand it, there was not as rigorous of a strategy and plan, uh, in place or adopted during the last term of council and it was an effort of the previous term of council and the staff to make sure that this work was done. It's the kind of work that, uh, I guess a lot of people, a lot of residents, you know, don't see a lot of, uh, the hard work that goes into it, going out and analysing all of our, uh, assets and of our local, uh, playgrounds and open spaces. And it's something that we really need to have a great, uh, grasp on when considering the financial sustainability for our council. And so it's good to see us get to the end of what's been a pretty, uh, hard road and looking forward it's going to be possibly, uh, an even harder one.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Any further discussion? Put forward to a vote, those in favour? Councillors Dixon, Harrington, Hill, Lee, Mason, Pamowski, Pascoe and Hawkins. Those against? Councillor Judd, King and Madden. It's carried. And moving on to, uh, business that's, uh, of which written notice has been given, so BN eighteen slash twenty twenty-five, this is the suspension of all non-legislative net-zero expenditure to support financial sustainability. Someone to move that, councillor King? Seconded, councillor Judd. Speaking councillor King.
Thank you, Mr May. And, um, just from the start, this is about saving money. We just heard from across the room here on both sides that it looks pretty grim, so my pitch is not about climate change, it's not even about the programme that we run in, this is simply about looking at saving money. So I'll just run through some of my thoughts for as long as I have time for. While the director's commentary presents a positive outlook, there are several major issues with the assumptions, modelling and projections provided. The six million dollar savings is speculative and not guaranteed. The commentary acknowledges that the fifteen million dollar figure is conceptional modelling only. All cost and savings projections are based on assumptions spanning over twenty-five years. These figures are likely to change. If long-term projections are uncertain, then it is equally possible that savings will not eventuate or that costs will increase. Budgeting should be based on confirmed legislative obligations, not twenty-five-year hypothetical modelling. Council cannot rely on grant funding as a justification for expenditure. The report repeatedly references grant funding potential. Grants are competitive, not guaranteed and often dependent on prescriptive criteria that can shift with political cycles. A strategy that depends on grants to justify expenditure exposes ratepayers to risk if grants are not secured. Council should not commit to long-term expenditure simply because grants might be available. The examples provided all rely on selective best-case scenarios and highlights only the most favourable initiatives like the LED lighting, there's an approximate saving mentioned in the report, but every budget review is flagged as an increase in cost pressure. With FOGO, so the food and organics, I'm really glad this was brought up in the report because the report claims that we've cut costs from four million dollars to two point six million dollars. So if that's true, why do we charge the ratepayers an extra sixty dollars for that service and not pass on the saving? So none of these future savings are guaranteed and many depend on technological or market factors outside of council's control. The report downplays a real impact on the budget and, but the ongoing pipeline of net-zero related projects must be assessed, must be staffed, must be costed and often requires upfront capital before savings occur. This represents a real administrative and financial commitment that competes with essential services and infrastructure backlogs. The commentary stated it does not create financial commitments outside of ordinary budget processes. This confirms that it's discretionary spending, not a legislated requirement. The logical conclusion would be if this kind of spending is not required by law and if expenditure decisions still return to the delivery programme and the long-term financial plan, then pausing this expenditure simply allows council to redirect its constrained resources to core services during a period of financial strain. A suspension does not undo past projects, it does not remove LED savings, it does not prevent solar, future solar projects from being considered on their own merits and it does not stop council from pursuing grants and standalone high-value initiatives. A suspension simply prevents council from being locked into a broad unfunded long-range programme that has uncertain cost-benefit outcomes. The commentary claims, uh, case-by-case assessment is better than a blanket suspension, but pausing the plan does not stop a case-by-case decision. In fact, suspension forces each future project to stand on its own merits with a cost-benefit analysis. It prevents pushing low-value projects into the budget and allow council to prioritise financial sustainability first rather, rather than aspirational modelling. The report also cites a national-level Deloitte modelling by the year twenty sixty that has no direct link to the cost-benefit analysis of Sessnock City Council's local operational decisions. When we are about to consider a thirty-nine point nine percent rate rise, ratepayers expect financial discipline in difficult times especially. With infrastructure backlogs, increasing operational costs, strong pressure on future rate rises and community affordability concerns...
Uh, thank you councillor King, that's time.
Sure.
Uh, councillor Mason?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I see what councillor King's trying to achieve here from a financial perspective in light of our financial challenges. I'm proposing a change to the wording if councillor King's in agreement, as follows. One, that council suspend all future expenditure programmes, projects and activities relating to achieving net-zero emissions that are not required under any state or federal legislation. Any future net-zero expenditure outside of state and federal legislation is to be presented to council for determination with a cost-benefit analysis before adoption. And two, that council directs, redirects any future savings towards or relies towards stabilising council's financial position and supporting core service delivery. And I'm making that amendment in recognition that, one, some of these programmes are already committed and don't make financial sense to unwind, and two, there may be cost savings to be made for future planned but not yet committed projects and we need to consider those on a case-by-case basis. I'm proposing that these come to council for consideration.
Yeah, move in a second, I'm happy with accepting that amendment. Yep. Okay, so, I'll just edit that. Okay, so, that has been adopted as the, um, proposed, uh, the, the motion. Do you have a question just on that? Councillor Harrington?
Not a question, just an observation, um, state or federal instead of of legislation.
Second line?
Yes, second line, yeah.
Okay, now we'll move on to, uh, any further observations? No? Councillor Madden?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. We've sort of moved the goalposts a bit here, so I've still, I've got a bit of a statement. So, first of all, I'd like to say that net-zero projects are crucial because it is scientifically agreed upon, um, goal to halt global warming by balancing greenhouse gas emissions. Uh, this balance is essential to prevent catastrophic climate change impacts. BHP alone are spending two billion dollars up to twenty thirty on decarbonisation. Rio Tino are spending between five to six billion dollars to twenty thirty on decarbonisation. Yes, of course, net, uh, zero projects come at a cost. Even in the financial crisis from two thousand eight to two thousand nine, several countries in economic blocks, including several countries in the G and, G seven, spent big money on green stimulus programmes for net-zero goals. From the director's commentary on the, and initiatives and savings from street lighting, solar and potential for methane gas extraction, we should be doing the exact opposite of the motion and further investigate all potentials. I recommend councillors not support this motion because all of our, our important role at all levels that we have in ensuring we reach our goal of net zero.
Okay, councillor Madden, uh, councillor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. Putting aside, I guess, any commentary I may have on the topic of the notice of motion in relation to, uh, the environment, I think my biggest concern with the actions trying to be achieved here is the way in which this nom seems to almost misunderstand the way in which our council adopts our delivery programmes each four years and our operational plans and our yearly budgets. All of us here in this chamber have the opportunity every year to analyse the line items within our twelve monthly budget statements, identify items we wish or do not wish to have in those budgets and have them removed and I, or, or included if they're not included. And I worry that a, a mechanism like this that identifies a particular policy or strategy that we would like to cease spending on, if, if this argument is to be made in this instance that it's only on a cost-benefit analysis, you, you could blanket this over our disability inclusion plan, any of our pedestrian safety plans, any of our economic plans, anything that we have adopted at council that is trying to drive a direction and a position which includes, um, policies in relation to possible future spending. All of those programmes are put in place to provide information and guidance to councillors when it comes to our normal budgeting process in spending. I think that trying to blanket annihilate spending on any particular topic like this from a notice of motion, no matter the topic, is an inappropriate way in which to go about trying to reduce, um, spending or try to make benefits in our financial sustainability. If there are items that we believe are inappropriate for spending, be it around net zero, be it around tourism, be it around, uh, disability inclusion or pedestrian safety, those items should be identified during our delivery programme or operational plan and budgeting scheme each twelve months and items added and removed as necessary to ensure that our spending is, is sensible in our current, uh, situation. That gives us an opportunity, uh, as some of the document, uh, some of, some of the commentary indicates, that we can do a, we can sort of identify what the cost benefit is to each of these items when the entire budget is being adopted, uh, not entirely excluding any particular area or policy or strategy on a blanket matter as, uh, my read of this nom seems to intend to do. So, um, I don't believe that I'll be able to support this notice, a notice of motion even in its amended form.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Councillor Pamowski?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to start off that I think this is extreme, underestimating what small initiatives have in combating climate change. Net zero is not an initiative to be fobbed off, it is an area where, it is not an area where funding should be cut. Net zero is not an initiative to be fobbed off. It is an area where, it is not an area where funding should be cut. It is vital to ensuring our community thrives for generations to come. Investing in net zero initiatives will save residents money in the long run by reducing operational costs and delivering meaningful environmental benefits. We cannot ignore climate change. Recently, we experienced two major storms that brought trees down onto homes and power poles and lines down, leaving homes and businesses without electricity for days, not to mention on a larger scale that over 60 bushfires currently burning in the state, while not long ago perished or experienced snow during summer. These events will only worsen as climate change accelerates and the council must do everything it can to reduce these impacts. Climate change will inevitably cost residents more in the long run as we face significant damage from increasingly unpredictable weather patterns, along with added pressures from population shifts driven by global warming. Every cent spent on reducing impacts of climate change is money well spent in keeping our LGA safe and doing our part to make a lasting difference. When we look at climate change, we must consider our past, present and future, reflecting on previous practices and some current ones that still need improvement. We know that going backwards is not an option. Instead, we must go forward and create a greener, more resilient, practical and affordable economy for our residents.
Councillor Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor Wharton. Look, I just wanted, and I'm just, I hope he's not going to kick me under the table, but I'm speaking to just disagree with councillor Hill when he mentioned quite forthrightly that going, that going, it's against council procedures to remove items from our operational plan and delivery plan mid-year when those, they have already been budgeted and a decision is decided. Yet we all here in this room have witnessed items being removed from our operational programme and delivery programme in order to sustain financial sustainability in the last few months. There hasn't been an issue there to get rid of the southern bypass, the other, the Millfield, sorry, Elalong Park, those things, the things that they were, they were quite easily taken, scratched off our operational plan. I actually, you know, I support, and maybe surprising to some, but my support for this motion is from a financial position because it is, it's good financial management and governance. You know, council is under real financial pressure and we need to focus our spending on core services and essential infrastructure. This motion pauses, or this motion, and I, and I actually thank you councillor Mason, I do prefer the wording of the amendment because it pauses all non legislative net zero expenditure and directs our general manager, you know, to, to cease any discretionary initiatives immediately. But importantly, this motion doesn't stop us from considering future net zero projects. It simply ensures that any new proposal comes back to this chamber where councillors can sit and critically analyse the financial implications, weigh up the benefits and make transparent and accountable decisions. It doesn't stop us from applying for grants. If external funding opportunities arise, council can still pursue them. But we just, as councillor King mentioned, we just have to look at case by case situation and see if it is in our financial benefit to do so. Look, this is a sensible and disciplined approach, I think, and for those reasons, I support this motion.
Thank you, councillor Harrington. Councillor Pascoe? Okay, motion to be put. Now, we need a second for that. Councillor Pelmowski? I'll now put it forward. Yeah, councillor Mason, procedural motion?
I mean, the wording?
No.
No.
Yeah, we have to deal with the vote. Yep. So put it forward for a vote. All in favour of the notice motion as it stands right now? Oh, sorry, to put the motion for the vote. So all in favour? Yes, for the motion to be put. So we're voting for the motion to be put. Then we can, yep. So four is councillor Lee, Madden, Pelmowski. Those against? Councillor Dixon, Harrington, Hill, Joad, King, Mason, Pascoe, Hawkins and Wharton will continue debate. So I had councillor Pascoe.
Thank you, Mayor Wharton. The reason I voted against that is because I have questions. So I would have to abstain, abstained from voting because I still don't know the answers to my questions. Net zero isn't something that I have studied or researched in great depth. So I'm asking firstly, when was the legislation changed? It was only recently, wasn't it?
Well, to speak on actual policy, I'm not the master of that domain either. Might, you want to have an answer to that? Councillor King? Yeah, sorry, ask a question, councillor King. Yep.
On a federal level, it was in 2022, I believe, when Australia agreed to sign up to the Paris Climate Change Agreement under Scott Morrison. And we have only adopted this policy in council last year in 2023.
And the legislation's now been removed? Okay, so obviously there's a lot of unknowns about this. Has any of our council staff had time to actually reflect on what no net zero would mean for any of our projects? I know we got a brief summary in our report.
I'll put it through to Director of Corporate Community Services.
Thank you, councillor Pascoe. Beyond the director's commentary, the short answer would be no, there's been no detailed investigation of what the implications may be.
Which would be what, we're just breaking off models?
However, I think in part of the commentary, that is one of the concerns, you know, we don't know, we don't know.
And that's why often the modelling in our director's commentary would have been obscure, you know, an estimate. So.
General manager. Yep.
What we can say is that if we don't have that policy and we suspend, we won't be eligible for grants that might support us in individual case initiatives that would need to come. The plan that was endorsed by councillors, the NOM talks to, didn't commit council to those expenditures. They would come to this council as a matter of either budgetary course or separate as in the case of the waste cell because of the scale of the project. But the others will be all, and I don't think councillor King's wrong, individual case by case, but I would, I respectfully suggest that's the process we already endorse.
Okay, so in that case, I agree with both councillor Hill and councillor King.
Yeah, and, and I'm also having difficulty hearing councillor Pascoe, if she could speak in the microphone, must be my age.
Okay, there we go. Microphone's back on.
Thank you. The, if we don't, if we suspend eligibility for grants that are related to net zero that are offered by the other levels of government, we would not be able to apply for those for projects, even though we thought they may be of value. What, in terms of the broader plan, referencing the larger spends and the larger potential revenues, there's no commitment to council to make those expenditures. They would find their way into either budget or individually to the chamber for endorsement.
Councillor Pascoe, do you? Yep.
Thank you, Mayor Wharton. So I agree with what councillor King is trying to get out of this motion. Although I agree with councillor Hill as well that suspending all expenditure might be a bit of a rush decision if there hasn't been the staff interaction and investigation in that. But it will definitely be something that I will be keeping an eye on to try and improve our financial stability in the future.
Thank you, councillor Joad.
Thank you, Mayor. What is the current emissions output for our council operations?
I believe we'll have to take that on notice. Sorry, can you speak on your behalf, director?
Yeah.
Because they'd be measured in terms of different facilities and services.
Yeah, just a breakdown because if we're claiming we're saving money using net zero, I'd like to see, see that. Because I mean, let's face it, my power bills haven't gone down with net zero. Next question, grants, they cost us money as well. So I can't see how, when we're in the state of financial that we are in, being the fact that we may lose out on grants is, is a major concern to me because I think it comes back to wants, not needs. And right now, we need to focus on what is needed, not wanted. And as much as I think everybody could sit here and talk about how they care for the environment, we all do. We live here, we die if we don't look after our environment. But as far as net zero, I do have a few issues with it. But the biggest thing here is about our current money, our current situation. And I can't see why we wouldn't support looking at trying to save as much money as we can whilst looking after our environment. Because that's not saying we're not going to do any of it. It's just saying that we are going to look at it by case by case. Summers always here have fires. We don't backburn like we used to. That's no different to what's going on currently, which it's really not great. I've put hands down to all the fireys out there because they do a job that I wouldn't want to do. The snow's in Oberon this time of year nearly all the time. And honestly, I would, would love people to do a little bit of research on the government website to look into the 1967 Rainmakers Act. Because honestly, when you start looking into that, it makes you open your eyes to a lot of other things. So. Excuse me?
Councillor Joad's on the floor.
Yeah, okay. So at the end of the day, I see what Quinton's trying to do, or sorry, councillor King's trying to do here. We are trying to show the community that in this current living crisis, where there is a lot of people that might end up having to sell their homes or move out of the area, that we are not, not taking it lightly. We are looking at every opportunity to save every dollar that we can whilst looking after the planet because that's not going to stop us from looking after the planet. Thank you.
Councillor Hill? You've spoken once.
Just a question, thank you, Mayor Wharton. To, I guess to councillor King initially, the NOM relates a lot to current spending. Was there any current spending, I'd been, that, I guess you as the mover of the motion perhaps that you noted in our current delivery programme related to these policies that you could help outline for us to indicate the type of saving that we might make? Like, is there, are there line items that we envision will be removed from the current delivery programme that relate to this project that sort of maybe led to the, the thoughts of moving this NOM? Is that something that, I mean, happy to take on notice, I just see you might not have the stats.
No, I don't have to take it on notice. I can tell you because it's pretty much, as you all will know, we don't receive any reports on the climate change plan, what we're spending on it, what savings we're making on it, what projects they're currently pursuing. We don't have any information of that other than what's in the delivery plan and the operational plan. So to me, I'm presenting you with $15 million worth of saving here and I'm more than willing to ask the question, if I can ask a question and an answer to stress testers because councillor Joad asked what council's emissions output is, right? I didn't want to go down this debate, but I'm being forced now to justify this. So I'm going to stress test the programme.
Um, just before, so I can't just keep order of business.
I'm happy. My question was, if I was purely financial, my question?
Well, I'm answering his question.
Yeah, just to clarify because I felt we were going on a different tangent. Yeah, okay, keep going.
So if I'm taking it, if they can't answer us how much emissions output council operations is, it's probably because they don't know, right? The problem with that is how do you get a baseline to measure the progress, right? If you don't know what the output is, net zero requires reducing your emissions to a certain level and then offsetting the remainder. So without knowing the starting level, how are you going to know when you achieve net zero? So right now, everyone is playing along the same tune, oh, we're in grave danger, singing out of little Greta Thunberg's playbook. And council is telling us that we're in great financial strains on giving you $15 million. So the question is, how are you going to offset that if you don't know what the base is? Anyone?
Well, we're, just to follow up with, you know, the order of business, it was a question aimed at you councillor King to answer councillor Hill's question. So we'll go back to the question asked, ask her. Does that suffice your question? Sorry, councillor Hill, you went on speaker.
Yep, sorry. The question to whether or not there was any line item numbers with a, with a dollar amount in our existing delivery programme that this would affect was not answered, but I'm happy to leave it at that.
Okay, councillor Mason? Point of order, councillor Hawkins?
Thank you, councillor Mason. We'll close debate being the matter?
No, councillor King was the mover. He adopted the amendment.
Okay, that's fine, I'll wait.
Uh, councillor Mason?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Two points. Just a wording changes. Councillor Hawkins has proposed third line of the first point, state or federal legislation? Thank you, Minutetaker. Perfect, thank you. And secondly, just a, just a point about the grants. This motion doesn't preclude us from applying for grants for net zero. It just means that the elected body needs to consider each decision on its merits before we do so.
Okay, councillor Hawkins?
Mr Mayor, look, just, I, I'm always reluctant when local government get involved in state matters or federal matters for that matter. When, when this climate change resilience programme was first slated, we had a big sort of discussion about what our impact was actually going to be on net zero. And it sort of boiled down to the federal government have a system and the state government have a system and we can adopt the plan and we can work towards it and we can be part of that and get access to grant funding for programmes, whether that's solar panels on the roof of the library that will be subsidised by grant funding, that's only available if you're part of the resilient, if you have a plan. So we adopted it. We're now part of, we have a plan that we're working towards that accesses this funding. So I really think the, the bigger picture sort of net zero thing fades into comparison for the programmes that having this policy allows us access to. And so I guess I, I can't support suspend all future expenditure. I, I think perhaps a more appropriate notice of motion would be to actually get the information on where we are with our resilience plan. When councillor King says, I don't even know what the costs are or what, what we're spending or what our starting point is. To suspend something we don't have the information on seems a little bit, you've preempted. And I guess we're jumping into the, the federal argument of net zero and what the Labour policy or the Liberal policy or the Greens policy or the One Nation policy is. And I guess it's, it's almost inflammatory to be arguing net zero, we've got to be opposed to anything involved with net zero. When the reality is, is that you're either, you have this plan and you're part of the programme and you get access to this funding, or you don't and you won't and you can't. It just seems a very, I guess, politically motivated position for the council to take rather than pragmatically that our position in, in the food chain is at local government level and accessing state and federal programmes to assist in that sort of a thing. Bring down the cost of the electricity at our libraries or our waste management centre or our council administration building. Those sorts of things are practical money saving solutions. Yet you say you've given the council $15 million over the next 25 years. That's a projected investment in these things. When, when solar panels pay themselves back in three to five years, they have a 20 year life. So you've saved money, but we haven't accessed cheaper electricity for the next 16 years. It just seems counterintuitive. So I, I can't support this motion as it stands. I guess I would even go as far as to ask if you would consider a deferral of this motion till we had a workshop and briefing on what is our sustainability, what's it called? What is our climate change resilience plan? I, I see we've sort of selected some parts that we're going to quote from it, but the, the total document seems to be relevant here that we all have a proper understanding of what suspending and removing ourselves from these projects would actually affect. I get it. It's wonderful to thump the table and, you know, I'm, I'm anti net zero. But the reality of what we can affect by throwing our toys out of the cot here at local government level, we should be part of the programmes, with or like them or not, you can be part of them and access the savings that they present. So I, I will be opposed to this motion that is to suspend all future expenditure. And I guess I would float, I'll move a deferral so that a briefing can be held. And I guess I would float, I'll move a deferral so that a briefing can be held to get the information.
Move, yep. So we need to second, so you just timed out, so you want to move a deferral till we get...
A minute left, but yeah.
Yep.
I would move a deferral so that we could actually get the information and have a discussion, rather than this debate on Counselor King's interpretation of a policy that by his own admission, we have no updates on, no information on.
I'll just mindful of the time, so we're timed out, so we'll put that forward. So we need to second to look to defer that. So Counselor Madden, all in favour of deferring? Counselor Lee, Madden, Hawkins and Wotton, those against? Counselor Dixon, Harrington, Hill, Judd, King, Mason, Pamelski and Pascoe? So we're back to debate.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I guess I'll just state that I'll be voting against this motion. I think it's funny to suspend something that you say we don't have the information on, when you may be unaware of the benefits, the net benefits of being part of the net zero proposition. So I wouldn't recommend to councillors to follow this notice of motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hawkins. So this will be your right reply, this will close debate. So, all right, Counselor King.
Look, just to Counselor, because I don't think there's anything funny about spending ratepayers' money on discretionary items when we're about to slug them 40% in a rate rise, when these are policies, like you all just said, from a federal and state level. Why does the federal and state level not fully fund these policies? And why do we have to take money from ratepayers to charge them on the back end to do an emissions target programme that we don't even know what our emissions output is? I don't think this is wise spending. If we want to do something about the climate change, because you like to talk about my ideology, but you all make yourself feel good thinking you're saving the planet with this rubbish. But it's costing families. And this is a way for us to save them a bit of money where we don't have to spend this money. That's the point I'm trying to make, it's discretionary. Like FOGA was a mandate, we didn't have a saying that. The state government said, under our policy, you will implement this. So we did that. With this, this is self-inflicted. We are choosing to spend, and I'm using the figure because there's not a whole lot of information available to us out of this. I found this on a business paper from the meeting when they actually initiated this programme. And those figures that I'm using in here is coming from that, where they said that the future expenditure to achieve net zero is in the realm of $15 million. And then they may possibly make a saving of $6 million. So what I'm saying right now is that we are in a financial position where you want to ask ratepayers, you know, and we all know, I don't have to tell you about the cost of living. Everything is going up, everyone is suffering and we are lower socio-economic area. But now we, how do you justify, I can't justify spending that money on something like this. So that's the point I'm trying to make. I suppose the general public will judge us all by our decision. Thank you.
All right, we'll now put that forward for a vote. So just make sure that we've got the wording, because there was a bit of a change there. Sorry, Robin. Okay, so just making sure that that's what we're actually, not the original motion that's put forward, the second amendment. So put forward for a vote, those in favour? Counselor Dixon, Harrington, Judd, King, Mason and Wotton, those against? Councillors Hill, Lee, Madden, Pamelski, Hawkins? Who are there? Six all? Vote against? So you're abstaining, so you're voting against? Okay. Yeah, it's technically, it's a vote against if you abstain. Okay, voting against. Okay, so just confirm that that's lost. So abstain's lost. We have a point of order or... Well, just, okay, let's redo the vote. I think the simplest thing to do is to actually just redo the vote where that sits. So we'll go, is it six-six? Well, let's just make sure that we got it right. Okay, so those four? This is for the amended motion. So Counselor Dixon, Harrington, Judd, King, Mason and Wotton, those against? Councillors Hill, Lee, Madden, Pamelski, Hawkins? The deferral's against, is it? We're casting votes, so I'm for. Yes, well, we just voted, but...
The manager was the one that supported, that gave me the advice to abstain from voting.
We might need to look at that separately, I know what you're referring to, but we'll need to... Director? Yeah, Director, I've got an answer from Director of Corporate Community Services.
Can I just hear how she votes? Because Counselor Hills keeps saying about it, it's not that, it's just that I was told I would get in trouble if I abstained. I don't want Counselor Pascoe getting in trouble for an abstaining vote if that's the case. That is what I'm, that is the issue I'm raising.
Okay, I'll just get some commentary from the Director of Corporate Community.
So just for clarity, our code of meeting practice does state that if a councillor abstains from a vote, it is registered as a vote against. However, that councillor has the option to elect to have it noted that they've abstained from it in the minutes. So our code of meeting practice is quite clear. If you don't vote, don't put your hand up, it is counted as a vote against.
Yes. Yeah, General Manager.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Any of these matters are a matter for the chamber and that's fine. I just need to make it clear particularly to those online, there is no commitment to that $15 million, nor no agreement that those outcomes will be derived. Some of these debate, and I think it's needed for some caution, does come back on staff, particularly at this point in time, about matters that are being raised here that don't have necessarily a lot of bearing in the documents that are printed. I would also comment that whilst individually we don't have the data stored away in our heads about what our emission targets are, they are within that climate plan and are easily viewed by anybody who wishes to view that climate plan and the options that exist within it. Thank you.
Thank you, General Manager. Okay, now moving on to councillors' reports. So we've got a report there from Counselor Madden.
Thank you, Mayor Wotton. Yes, on Friday the 28th of November, the Blackhill Quarry Community Liaison Group met. The meeting was held in Carrick, as per the normal meeting practice. There was a subsequent site visit associated with this meeting, which I was unable to attend on this occasion. Just briefly, some of the agenda items including, included, discussed at the meeting. The quarry will cease operation in June 2026. There is no plan for rehabilitation on the quarry floor due to the potential waste facility. Most of the material extracted is for John Holland, is for John Holland for the M1 extension on the southern side of the river. There are approximately 6,000 to 7,000 tonnes stockpiled on site currently. The 2023-24 tonnage report was updated and the 24-25 tonnage figures are incorrect. And there seem to be some issues with the five-year average as well in the report. There were some discussions from the committee on the Section 94 contributions, reported by a member that in all the years, there have only been two years when funds were expended. There is currently 442k available in the account to expend on road improvements. Senior council representatives are currently investigating what projects are in the plan. The Bloomfield Group are enquiring land from Yankool in this area and will take responsibility for the ongoing rehabilitation of the area acquired. The Donaldson Mine Conservation Area has also been acquired and the Bloomfield Group will take responsibility of managing it as well. I asked the question to the quarry manager when the last resource regulator inspection was conducted at the quarry and were there any findings? And can a report be accessed by the committee? Reported by the quarry manager, there were no findings and no report provided by the regulator at this time. That's the full report.
Thank you, Counselor Madden. Any questions or... Come on there, that report. Thank you for providing that comprehensive report, Counselor Madden. Any other councillor reports? No? Okay, I did have a typical summary there. I'm not sure it's actually populated. If it's not there, then I can... No, that's okay, I'm not being rushed there, Robin. That's okay, I'll circulate that around. Local Government New South Wales Conference was a bit of a highlight. It was a big highlight, actually. So some good support there for joint motions from JO and from this council as well, which was great. And, but I'll circulate that, I won't speak to that because it's not in front of us right now. Now we need to move on to confidential sessions. So could I please have someone to move that? Counselor Judd, seconded, Counselor Mason, all in favour? It's unanimous.
Okay. Um. Now we need to move on to uh confidential sessions. So could I please have someone to uh move that councillor Joad, seconded, uh councillor Mason, all in favour? It's uh unanimous. Uh so I'll just ask that the gallery, uh please clear. Um. Now we need to move on to uh confidential sessions. So could I please have someone to uh move that councillor Joad, seconded, uh councillor Mason, all in favour? It's uh unanimous. Uh so I'll just ask that the gallery, uh please clear. Um. Now we need to move on to uh confidential sessions. So could I please have someone to uh move that councillor Joad, seconded, uh councillor Mason, all in favour? It's uh unanimous. Uh so I'll just ask that the gallery, uh please clear. Um. Now we need to move on to uh confidential sessions. So could I please have someone to uh move that councillor Joad, seconded, uh councillor Mason, all in favour? It's uh unanimous. Uh so I'll just ask that the gallery, uh please clear. Okay. Well, that's it. So councillors endorse that?
Okay, ready to close the meeting. And if I don't see councillors before uh the Christmas break and New Year's, uh have a last meeting, yeah, well, this next me- this next Wednesday, the briefing. But if by chance people are on leave, have a Merry Christmas and a safe new year and ordinary meetings back January next year. Okay, thank you.